YouTube streaming, but we're going to, you've got that plan of uploading it later. Riley's reporting through WebEx.
Okay.
Got it.
So.
All right, and we will call to order the October meeting of Victorian Village Commission. The next hearing will be Wednesday, November 9th, 2022, in this room, 111 North Front Street, second floor, ring 204. Swearing on staff, do you swear that you tell the truth and nothing about the truth?
I do, Kimberly Bernard, Chief Deputy Minister for Preservation Planner.
Thank you. Introduction of Commissioners and Presidents.
Commissioner Hissam.
Tim Skinner.
Reece Bright.
Belinda Shaw.
Robert Goss.
And Kimberly, do you want to give the overview of the format?
Present.
We haven't done that in a while, but as a quick format, when the application starts, I will start off by reading a staff report. Advocates can come up to the desk up here. You will be then swearing in by the chair, or in this case, the vice chair, filling in an end chair, before being able to fill in any additional information you'd like to add. After that wraps up, we will call any speakers. If we have some, we do have at least one for one later on.
Okay.
In the evening, and then the commission will be able to discuss and then ask questions.
Okay, great, and anything else with the City Columbus Guidelines? Okay. Do we have a public forum?
Not today, no.
Okay, great, so we can move along to approval of staff approvals.
Correct.
And you want to read, take a vote first and then...
Yeah, take a vote and then we have questions and objections.
Okay. Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval of the staff approvals.
Second, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, starting on page seven, if you'd like to follow along. Our staff approvals are 316 West First Avenue, 76 West Second Avenue, 615 North High Street, 339 West First Avenue, 53 to 55 West Star Avenue, 804 Neil Avenue, 841 Denison Avenue, 316 West Second Avenue, 189 West First Avenue, 961 to 963 Neil Avenue, 913 Neil Avenue, 1028 Neil Avenue, 325 West Hubbard Avenue, 239 Buddles Avenue, 148 Buddles Avenue, 11 to 23 West Third Avenue. Hearing all objections, I'll turn it back to you.
Good, now we can move along to approval of minutes from the last meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion passes, sorry, yes.
It's okay. Normally Shaw is here to lead us, so.
And then do a good job. You said you did a good job.
Yes, so far.
That don't let us see it.
All, all my candidates, Jeff Lee.
With that, I believe we can move along to the applications.
Yes, we are starting off number two, which is 1066 Neil Avenue, with the applicant here. Go ahead and step up. Hi, this one is to fill in a wall behind the eastmost window on the south elevation of drywall. Commissioners at the business meeting were supportive of drywall in the interior at the postroom of the mall, there was space. Commissioners do suggest the drywall be painted a solid dark color. Staff recommends approval of the application with the condition that that interior drywall is painted a solid dark color. When they paint chip or color splash, it should be submitted to staff prior to issuance of the certificate. Basis for staff recommendation is City Code 3116.11. These standards for alteration.
Good. Where are you guys in? If you can state your, your name, please.
Jeff Bator.
Adrian Rivera.
If you raise your hand, swear you can tell the truth and nothing about the truth.
Yes. Thank you.
Do you have anything to add to the application?
No, this is our first time, so, you know, Kimberly's been a huge help guiding us through this. But yeah, we originally wanted to brick in the window. Kimberly, you know, let us know right away that that wasn't something that the commission typically approves, so. I have sort of an updated plan for my contractor. It's been a little difficult to get him to produce. He's so busy, but he did sort of a drawing that's not to scale. If you want to see this, you know, or do you just need the paint color?
Well, one thing, I don't mean to open another can of worms, but did we discuss this in the...
So, and we've gotten moved to staff approval with the condition of the paint chip, but the applicant wanted to remain on the agenda, so.
Because the only other thing I would bring up is they think about doing a full shutter. That's been done also in German Village and is quite effective also.
Well, I can show you a picture of that side of the house.
Well, basically, instead of painting, it's just a shutter.
On the inside.
On the outside.
On the outside.
Is that routine with the existing window?
Yeah, yep, yep, yep.
And do you want to say the same thing, like inside and stuff without the paint?
Exactly.
We're open to that, like, we'll do whatever.
That's a little bit.
I'm not married.
Looks effective and it's a little...
Yeah, there's three windows there, so the only thing I would worry about is shutter would, they match, or matches well. But not opposed to it.
I don't know what you guys think about that.
He makes a good point about the shutter could be a bowling ball with all the shutters.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's three windows along that, and I picked sort of a gray color because it matches the screen. We'll leave the screen on, so I think it'll just fade and not be very obvious.
So if you want to go down that way, fine. I just wanted to bring it up just because.
I like that idea, though, it'd be pretty, no doubt.
Yep. We don't have anything else?
Any other comments from the...
Make a motion for VB 2210015, 1066 Neil Avenue, as submitted.
With the paint chip to be submitted?
With the paint chip to be submitted to the office.
Okay, do I give that to you, Kimberly?
If you can email, that's going to be better, because sometimes I will step between there and go on my desk. And if you just want to, you know, send a quick picture of...
Like a picture with his name?
Yes, just call that out specifically so there's no confusion.
You got it, yeah.
Second motion.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thanks. We appreciate it. Thanks again, Kimberly.
Oh, it was a good, first good experience. When they, when they, when you get the survey, mark all stars for it.
Especially the chair.
All right, the next application is number five, which is 109 Hubbard Avenue. Do you have the applicant? All right, so this application is to remove the retaining walls along the fallow to replace with new retaining walls. Change the driveway and four concrete parking pad on the west of the house. There is an alternate material provided as well. Install the paper patio at the rear. Move a walk behind the house and install a new fold in place of the existing porch, raising the floor to be in line with the house's finished floor. Install new concrete steps and a walk up to the porch. Remove the fence at the south edge of the property and repair or replace encrusted fence on the west side. Remove the existing tree stump and construct a new retaining wall at the west edge of the property and paint existing and new wood setting to match the existing paint color, with which the body would be the festive red and the trim would be the idle of times. Commissioners at the business meeting requested a scaled measured section drawing on the front porch and questioned if the front and the porch skirting was appropriate. They also requested confirmation on which colors that new porch railing and deck would be painted. Or the backyard of, and the gate has been noted on the plans, but does the commission need to see the final part of it? Or can the staff remove that portion of the gate to the fence? Staff recommends approval of the application with the condition that the porch skirting is vertical to better fit in what's in the neighborhood, the state and the shingles. The fruitless are submitted to staff prior to issuance of the certificate. Basis for recommendation is City Code 3116.11. These standards for alteration.
Can you, can you state your name for the work?
Please.
Carrie Tesar.
Swear to tell the truth and nothing about the truth.
I do.
Do you have anything to add to the application, Jerry?
No, not at all. And did we receive the scale drawing that was...
I believe so.
Yeah. Yeah, was sent to the scaled cut through for the porch.
We had this month having a hard time with it.
Yeah, mine's not loading either.
Why is it not loading? Nolan is temporarily getting things. Nolan, do you want to come and see if I can help? Do you want to scroll through the pictures and materials we have on the screen?
Yeah, I can look on the screen if you find that.
Can we legit handle on what, what all has changed from the last episode?
So they did submit an updated drawing of where the gate has been. Data that has been marked out and drawn, and I believe they've also submitted a section drawing. Remember, it proves crazy, last week was a little bit of a war unfortunately.
So that was one of the missing things, both the porch profile detail.
And it seems no, none of the technology is working with us well.
So.
Are you saying that this is your fault more than this?
No.
So we don't have the submitted drawings?
It, it is in there.
Okay.
It's just documents are not loading.
Got it, got it, got it.
Very well, sorry, should have gone, because I know I added it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's in the package of my, my...
Okay.
Starts on page 13, but I also have 16 total pages of mine.
That was...
You don't have to weigh.
Sure.
Yeah, so, so they put it out of the gate.
So, and I just think, what's it, it's to go to the user guide. To the... See what pulls us from the...
Which is, which is... All right.
On the, the west part of the property, where the tree stump is?
Yes.
Bring the new retaining wall in? Is that, is that wood retaining wall?
It's, it's wood now, but it's getting removed.
It's getting removed, okay.
Replaced with the wall.
I just worried that it was all your time, man. Snips down in there.
No, it's, it's coming.
Okay.
Yes.
Here. Oh, no, I'm, 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 they're recommending it. So I think it came out of that fashion.
Kind of, cool.
The gate, does anyone care what the audience, they don't have a picture of it, it's just that it's going to match the...
He's just, he, yes.
You're talking about the fence gate?
Yeah, he just drew it in as a, as an access and overhead, I believe. Yeah, it's automatic, it's a fence gate, just be a...
And materials are now up on this record.
And so the, the porch was an item that staff was recommending to change into the porch. To go for, yeah, was that something that the, that you're open to?
Yeah, we don't have a problem with that, I think it was noted, what, did we not note that?
I don't believe the picture of the updated, the skirting was updated.
So, uh, the, in that...
I, I think it says number 12.
That bottom left.
That bottom, that slap, but in the vertical, because you guys didn't like it on the horizontal, so we're just going up vertically, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought he had noted that, but I mean, I can't read any of that either.
Does the commission need any framing on the porch skirting?
I mean, I think that could be staff approval.
Okay.
Much to find one.
Work with staff.
Yep.
So we potentially have another number of items here that would be still outstanding for staff approval, correct? We have the, the gate skirting and the...
The, the gate's in the, he's got in the overhead, the aerial.
Yes, I'm talking about what it looks like with the hardware. So you're looking at it just to know.
No hardware, on that, on the outside of the gate. It's a flush gate, so hardware's on the inside.
Okay.
And there's just a, I thought he had sent you the picture of just the handle hardware. It's like the black cap, the black iron with the... I know I had sent it to him.
I don't recall, but that doesn't mean...
Okay, okay.
It may have been one of those things that didn't come across during the program.
Yeah, I can, I mean, I, I thought you guys had that, but I can, we can get that to you.
And then the final thing was the shingles.
Was what?
The final shingles, though, I should go through staff approval.
Are you redoing the portraing?
Uh, no.
Okay, it's just lifting that floor up?
Yeah, we're just redoing the deck and, and the handrails. And any like structural that has to be, you know, footings, rod and things like that. We were tearing the roof off and redoing it now.
That's just how it oriented, because it sounds like the entire porch is going to be...
Yeah, no, we, we just repairs it.
Any other comments from the... Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I can give this one. Motion on application VB 2208015, 109 Hubbard Avenue, to approve the application with the following conditions, that the vertical porch skirting and the fence gate details be approved by staff prior to issuance of the certificate.
Okay. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, we'll get you that stuff.
Yes, and I'll reach out probably within the next three, five, 10 days, things. If you beat me to it, it might not be a wonder, so we'll, we'll work with it as we go.
Sounds good, appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you, thanks. Six.
This is 251 West Fifth Avenue. This application is to install a new signment on a building to replace the old. On a new signment to include a new sign over the door that is 20 inches tall and 144 inches wide. Need laytime to measure 32 inches by 30 inches. And we'll use a crystalline hardware, just made of piggy seat, all butter high bread, max metal. The sign with background is 28 square feet and the late sign is 7.1 square feet. The lettering for the wall sign is smaller than the overall square footage, including the background. Does the commission consider the entire space for sign or just the lettering area? This should, and there should only be a single plate sign for the short notice design guidelines. Staff recommends approval of the application with just one of those plate signs, not two. And... Basis for staff recommendation are the short notice design guidelines, specifically wall signs and projecting blade signs. This was not on the agenda during the business meeting. The, yeah, had accidentally left it off September, so this is why it's on here now. It's a signing application. I figured it shouldn't be too out of left field, and it is my mistake that it did not get included last month.
Yeah, state the name for the record, please.
Matthew Harron.
You swear to tell the truth and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Great. The floor for...
Well, any additional things to add?
I know, I'm filling in for my business partner, Quinn Allen, I think we need communication with him to find some of that again, so. Just want to let you know I was filling in for them.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
So this is the building right across from the new development. Stands will pick up.
The old truck is at it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the bolster place, place?
Yeah, that's where I next door to.
Okay, got it. Do we have any issues with this, you guys?
So staff is recommending blade sign.
Yep, just a single, per the short notice design guidelines, one wall sign and one projecting sign.
There's two blade signs.
Yes, I believe Quinn and I had eliminated the one at the farther end, and I don't know if a rendering got misfiled, but I think both come up in this one, so I just wanted to make that statement.
The application is for, for one, then, the application is correct, that's, that's...
Yes, so the one wall signing, which is a little bit bigger square footage, but, you know, if the commission's defining what the sign is as just the lateral area and not the overall space, we might need to clarify that in motion, because the entire kind of block area with the background is larger than what a wall sign could be.
I'm okay with that, because I don't know how many people drive there, but that's kind of an empty place after that intersection. So as much signage as possible is probably a helpful thing, and I don't think it's about the business. I think it's about safety action. So I'm fine with this.
Is it just filling in an opening that's there? That's why the extra block I need to... Yeah. Then I'm okay with it being longer.
Is the door graphic part of this application too? You zoom in, there's a, the big village tavern on the door as well.
I mean, that's not necessary, I just got to put it in there, I thought it might look nice.
So I don't believe that was actually on the application, and I'm good catch. If the commission is okay with having that there, I would need scaled measured drawings. There's specific things that cannot go on... The seven inch, and I believe if it's Tiffany, that might be okay.
I thought it was complicated from the inside.
So if it's solely vinyl in the windows, you through that?
Yeah.
Oh, we can do that, adhesive on the inside, okay.
It's good to me.
Yeah, I don't know.
Let's make a motion for VB 2210025, 251 West Fifth Avenue, as submitted.
A second.
Hold on, I have a question. Does that include the barn on the door, or should that come through as a summary application?
Barn on the doors. I think they should show it to you, but it's by upper door.
Staff approval. Oh, sorry, is there lighting?
There is an existing light above the top sign.
Okay. That's it, sorry. Do we, do we need any clarification that it's just one blade sign, or is that clear on the application as it stands?
That should be clarified in motion.
Okay. That, that needs to be clarified in the motion?
Yes, please.
Well, I thought this last submission was the actual thing, it only had one blade sign and one sign above the front. And it wasn't...
It shows there.
It shows, okay, let's make an amendment to, as submitted to reflect just one blade sign. Then.
And the door?
And the vinyl.
And the vinyl to be submitted to, or staff approval on the door.
Second.
Yeah.
Still something.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. You.
All right, the next application is number seven, this is 53 to 55 West Star Avenue. So this application is the result of a code violation for work already completed for some of this stuff. So the application is to retain the painting of the previously unpaid accessory. The house is painted to be painted with mineral paint. Increase the rear parking with asphalting. Move the existing concrete sidewalks, front pads, steps, steps and concrete AC pads and just replace to match existing. Alter the front slope of the lawn by adding in a 24 inch retaining wall, using a rockfall system from pavement stone. Landscape PR to include reembellished boxwoods, new Kentucky grass salad and endless summer hydrangeas. Add light fixtures to the rear of the building. Install new bell boxes, remove existing original and contributing doors to install the six panel sealed doors and install a new heavy six by eight inch full print glass Anderson's dorm doors in black to match the distance room. There were a number of color schemes proposed, and the commission at the business meeting requested confirmation for what is currently painted on the brick as well as what the final silvered building would be. The applicant has clarified that the one fog PG paint is currently on the structure. They are proposing the Rondio Biodonas mineral paint. The proposed mineral paint for a stone-like coat on top of the brick and HBO staff finds this similar to elastometric paint and does not support its use to be concerned for long-term negatives. The fact that traps water resulting in deterioration of the brick. And as a reminder, the commission will do not review based on the cost bracket from value of the shop revenue. But how is this, how does the proposed work fit in what the city code may buy? So the historic preservation office considers this 1970 building contributing and is over 40 years old, which is our definition of for being an historic structure. Staff recognizes that this structure is not the current victim type of a drawing building. The structures normally reviewed are older, but because this is a modern building, does not mean it's any less deserving of the preservation. As the 1977 structures continue to tell the story of Victorian village and has continued up to this day. The blown brick of the structure is a contributing feature, and HBO staff recommends removal of the paints. Staff also recommends retention of the existing front air slums per City Code 31. 16.11, these standards for alteration. Staff recommends retention of the original front doors. The doors do not align as those recommended in the Victorian guidelines. Both the structure was constructed in the 1970s, so the doors may be new guidelines. What if you appropriate, since they have planted the house is at least 80 years older? And as a rear guard, it's used as a parking lot and asphalt surface. The commission should discuss if an incorporation of permanent materials would be appropriate. Staff recommends approval of the application with the following conditions, that the paint is removed from the bricks, paint removal should be composed. Cored with HBO staff and test patches may need to be completed. The front slope is retained and two front doors, RET. Basis for staff recommendation is City Code 3116.11, these standards for alteration.
Okay. Representatives of the applicant, state names for the record, please.
Jeff Doolin.
Jenny Ball.
You swear to tell the truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes.
And do you have anything to add to the application?
Hello?
The floor for discussion.
So if you guys incorporated or thought about the recommendations from the preservation office?
Yeah, some of the recommendations I, I don't follow. The doors are in awful condition. I don't see how they can be good. The wall, the retaining wall, the guy next door has a retaining. The guy across the street has a retaining. This would definitely improve the property value and make the buildings look nicer. I don't know why you want a slow block. The slow block from the retaining wall of the house to the left, so on the east side, is literally flowing into our basement and our, our sidewalks are like this. And it waters just running. That, the only way to handle this is to take out the cement or to tie, tie it back together, run the gutters with the lines out to the street or the cement the way it's supposed to be, instead of being like this. We got it tilted this way, so it drains out to the street properly.
We don't have anything in the material that shows adjacent property or QB.
We've got one.
So that shows the adjacent stone wall, then. That's always helpful to understand, because, you know, part of the nuance of the district is there are many cases of retaining wall, stone wall usually, but you also saw other times. It's kind of that, that sequence of nod and, and walls. And so it's always important to understand context of what it looks like. to understand context of what it looks like adjacent to the neighbor.
In all sincerity, I compare my build to a wall or nine, it just looks better. And to be honest, this costs me more money. If you guys don't want it built, fine by me, but I just think it makes it, it just looks nicer. I, I don't think, if you're looking at the two bidders, it's obvious it doesn't work. It works. Right?
Yeah, I tend to agree. Yeah, and on the retaining wall, I think the adjacent property has one and if you walk down that strip, you know, a lot of the properties that don't are larger multi-family, right? So across the street, you have one, you have one next door and I think this ties together pretty nicely and also accentuates kind of the walkway and entrance up to the home with the plantings, I think it works best.
So per what code?
What, the bigger part?
Per what code, you put one slot. Because my whole thing was the retention of the landscape, which is historic and I don't recall if I was asked to look into the neighboring property to see if that was approved or if it was a code violation that got adopted and to be approved.
Yeah.
So what the background was.
Yeah. Well, I think, I mean, this is one of the problems, right? We have exciting programs is it's pretty lacking in details.
True.
In, in book the code and I mean, there's, there's certainly in the Victorian village handbook, right? The plantings that complement the house and accentuate the entrance, which is, I mean, what we have here, doesn't speak to the retaining wall, but I think it ties, right, with the walkway up and making the house from curb appeal look, look better. I can't really say there was anything about that landscape retaining grade that impacts historical significance of this.
So the historical treatment is law to the sidewalk, correct? Slip, slip law, so that is kind of question as we, you know, both this case for is, is alteration to that treatment or non-treatment, alteration, problem or not, when, when you do the wall and not. I, I tend to agree that the setting does accentuate the entry a little bit more. You know, there is something to be said about the kind of the simple sidewalk flare to, to.
Yeah.
Very simple elegance that is maybe appropriate for this, this particular building and this style. So I, I think if I were to look at this fresh, I don't know that I would recommend the wall in this condition. Again, walls are common throughout the district. I don't have an issue with them being additive to a landscape in the right case. The question is, is this the right case if we prove it here, you know, where do we draw those lines in the future? When, when to do it, when not?
Okay, what about the smith? I mean, it's so deteriorated, guys. I mean, this, this is an absolute high score. I'm trying to help.
Yeah, completely understand and so where did, you know, this is about the.
When do we cross the, the historical part too? Which is obsolete.
The concrete be replaced in kind.
Yeah, it's obsolete.
As a, so.
Yeah.
Concrete replacing kind matched cheap walls, matched the stairs design.
Right, and even slope conditions, you know. It could be accommodated with new slope, adding a riser to the stairs, there, there are other solutions to the functional issue of great change, so.
It, it's cheaper for me, I'm fine with that, but I'm just saying that I think there's fine lines being crossed. To me is.
Well, I think, I think if you replace in kind and exactly, exactly how the flare out goes, make sure that your concrete is draining the right way, I think you're not crossing any line, you're replacing in kind.
That's fine.
And I think there are, there are other measures that can be done that are kind of within the, the guidelines of, you know, still curb appeal and what's happening at the foundation of the home, but you know, adding plant material there I think can, can be appropriated in this edition, but you know, up at that public way, that's a, again, that's a historic condition and if this were just a straightforward stair with, without that, kind of that detail, that flare that is, does have that elegance to it, I might feel differently, but that, that is such a simple expression, I think it's appropriate for.
Yeah, property, I do too. And then what was the comments about the doors?
Did, I just wanted to be understanding, are we allowed to put the doors on or we can't put the doors on?
That's what we're about to.
Yeah, we're just about to discuss that. So.
There's just a lot here, so.
Do we have a list in, do we have a list in the thing?
Yeah, we'll, we'll break it down for you here, let, let's talk about the doors next and then we can kind of recap and make sure we've covered all of our bases here. So the doors, uh, in bad shape according to the applicant. And so I think it's one a question of the ability to repair or restore what was historic, two, if, if replacement was appropriate, it wasn't replaced with the right type of floor.
Yeah, and you know, does the commission need additional photographs of damage deterioration?
You said yeah, or up to be sure the.
Yeah, do a better.
It's not voting against like five for page nine. Because.
So the crazy thing about that is that it's so seventies. If it was filled.
But so is that.
So, I mean, I'm, if you, and if, did you find a replacement for that door?
I don't know.
I'm sure.
Those people are aware of that those squares are just plastic that somebody tattooed on it and painted over, that's all it is.
Yeah.
And there, there's no craftsmanship there, it's plastic.
At least that's right.
It's all chipped away over years. I'm just really trying to improve the volume because to be honest, it's, it was embarrassing to show.
So, I mean, I, I think that this is, you know, I have questions about its contribution just because it's built in seventies, I understand what the guide wants to say, but if that's the case, I would keep it in its, I would replace in kind.
Yep.
I would paint it.
Yep.
And call it a day, which means if you're gonna put in a new door, it'll have that type of articulation and paint it if.
I was just, I think we proposed a door.
Yeah, but that's, was a four panel or a six panel colonial door, this is a nineteen-seventies house, it's a completely different style.
Yeah, so that's.
Somebody wants to show me where you can get a nineteen-seventy door and all yours.
Well.
It, it's just not that. Where do I get it?
I mean, one consideration is, I'm just spitting, but if, if these, if these plastic things are even reusable, if you wanna get a blank door and put that piece of plastic pieces back on a blank door, you're probably gonna get the same look if, I don't know what condition they're in, but that may be an option for you.
I am going to note that this is nineteen-seventies plastic, it's gonna be pretty darn.
Thank you, good, very good point.
And I'd also want to note that HBO does require your front doors to be wood. Yeah. Reminder, everybody likes to forget, all the other doors can be, you know, one fiberized or metal, but front doors need to be required.
Could be, be okay with the style, but not the stenciling, because you can get that.
Right, I, I think it needs to be eight handles though.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, could be, be okay with this, eight panel door.
It needs to be a better fit.
Yep.
So I guess six panel wood door?
Eight.
Eight panels, so eight, it needs the same square.
It's fine, yeah.
Would the commission be okay with another kind of seventies ask a door or replace in like kind?
My God, if it was four panel with a curved circle in the middle, that would work also.
You might have to sit me on the corner.
I'm just saying, it's in seventies.
To, to your point, yes, I, I'm not convinced it has to be this door exactly, but a era appropriate door is kind of what we're after, that we're, we're preserving the integrity of this moment in time.
Yeah, they make eight panel wood doors like that, it's just the inverse.
So we have, I think, maybe conclusion here of, of replacement of door is okay, but the style needs to be appropriate for era.
How does that work on that basement door?
So is that also a.
That's a steel door replaced?
So basement door is not gonna be on the front?
No, I think that, again, that would be replacing in kind, I think steel door would be.
And then the last one I think we had on there is the glass screen doors. Storm doors.
Yes, so staff's okay with those because they're the solid panel ones.
Okay.
Okay, so that, so we had three items, we're completely out of order based on the agenda, but.
That happens.
We covered the front lawn and the door, so the brick paint is the third or first item, however you're looking at it, so the, um, kind of commission thoughts on the painting of the brick, which has already been completed and so at this stage of the game for removal will be removal of said paint. And so again, the, you know, era of the building, I guess it's, is that in play here at all or is it a kind of firm stance?
We have a good picture.
We have a good picture of that.
Just slides two and three.
Yeah, I mean, I got it right here, you wanna see it?
Screen.
Thank you. It very much changes the nineteen-seventies character of it. You're seeing a lot of white Washington houses of this decade and others.
So if we, you know, if we were to see this prior to work being done, propose to paint or not?
Say, absolutely.
Here with it being painted, say, okay, that carried forward, say, reversible, within integrity of the brick and in this.
That's like, but at the same time.
It's nineteen-seventies brick, it's much part of brick, eighteen-seventies brick, you should be able to.
Yep.
Not with blasting, you would have to.
Yep.
So I think there is some thoughts from the commission on comparing with staff recommendations on property, so we can turn it back to you, are these things that you are liable to, to making these, following these recommendations?
I, I think you're, you're going where you're going. I was in Turkey, I didn't offer us to paint out, just to be clear, I was even in the country. We, my construction kids, guys got ahead of themselves by a mile, I don't even know how this happened, but the reality is, it's here. To pull this off, this costs a huge amount of money, but once I got, this is not a cheap thing. The suggestion that I made, that this was a breathable paint, I don't see if we're putting breathable paint on it, that shouldn't hurt, that's what the paint's created for, is to keep the integrity of the paint or the brick. So, and whatever it's worth, we were, when I came back over there to inspect it, I had neighbor, a neighbor coming up to me saying, thank you so much for trying to clean this up, it was an ice war. That doesn't bug me to have it, ask my guys do something they shouldn't have done, yes, I took care of it from her. But the, the following part is, it is a very expensive mistake that I didn't create. The other part is, in the end, I'm just trying to make this property look better in the neighborhood. The, the color of the brick, when you go look at it, if you're there in person or if you wanna clear a picture, it is not an attractive brick, not the slides, it's not like it's an older brick, who nan house that, that's just beautiful. I don't see how there's anything beautiful about it. And that's not me, that's, that's neighbors coming up to me.
I understand your position, our, our role here is to review up against the guideline that are set in place for preservation of the entire district.
Yeah.
On that lens.
Right.
So, you know, financial hardship is not something that we kind of rule on here.
Oh, no, I, I.
But there, there is a process.
Yeah, so it is not for the first review, so this, to, you know, kind of walk through the process, if this gets to a deny, there is an appeals process that, um, options for strange and unusual circumstances, a financial basis, the financial basis is very difficult to prove because there's a lot of documents required, such as documents and whatnot. I haven't yet had anybody appeal for a financial reason, so I cannot speak to exactly what all.
Not a building, it's on the financial, it is what it is, I'm just saying in general, it's, it's not attractive at all.
Most of the nineteen-seventies architecture can't be classified as attractive, it's very heavy and very.
And so for my, for my guys that did this, they're like, well, we didn't think this is an issue, the building right beside us is being, building over here is being, which we supply and all, it's like, we're not doing lots of it, this is flat out paint jobs popping down the street, so.
So I think probably what we should do is break this into, because we have the doors, okay?
Yep.
We have agreement on the concrete being replaced in kind and I think the paint is a sticky.
Yeah, paint is a sticky point, so options there, so what we're saying is we could, we could break this into a couple of different votes, this should kind of be easy ones that we should be aligned on, that we could put on and then keep the paint separate and, you know, options there, we, we can continue it on to next month, give you a chance to kind of evaluate the, you know, process there, make sure that you're not on the spot, feel comfortable with decision one way or the other on that.
It's, it's whatever you recommend, I just want what's best for your, the building, you know, it, as you said, it just, there's a certain time and spot where I, I think you gotta look at things and go, yes, it's, we're keeping the nineteen-seventies aspect, but when it's not attractive and you're trying to rent the property to get the best possible tenants in there, they're not liking the brick.
And so, you know, the, the paint, the brick is a, is a, is a tough one that, you know, yes.
Which I'm fine with a paint dyer and.
And can do a lot of things, but it's, it's about the preservation of the material.
You're hard pressed in this market with that building to say, you know, it's not a new build, it's existing, so interior quality space is what people are looking like, they really don't care what the outside is like. Now, the second thing I'm gonna tell you is this, is, and I don't know what the new commissioners think about this, but is there any way to distress that to look more like an, an old painted surface, do you know what I mean? Where you see remnants of paint, but you also see remnants of brick?
A wall.
In older.
So I have to.
Well, because I think it might, I think it might soften the whole thing without having to fly or, you think that we're gonna get back to that original brick surface if it's?
Do you know how often I do that?
Work. Do you really?
Oh, yeah. It has a whole lot of peaking removed right now.
Oh, well, then there's your, there.
I didn't say it was cheap, but yes.
Okay, okay.
But you end up with the brick you started with, polygonal.
And that would be done in test patches, so if there was clear discoloration or damage.
Especially this is a nineteen-seventies brick, this is a hardened brick.
Okay.
Is, I mean, is that maybe something that can be done as, as a continuation of?
I think we, I think we break it down, I think we break it down, I think we approve what we can approve and then I think it's up to them to decide what they're gonna do. I think we need to vote on it, I think we have to speak our minds and that it's up to, now we get to move forward in every direction he would like to move forward.
But I guess the question there, if, if, if we were, if there was a continuation, could we, could we suggest a test? But I guess the question there, if, if, if we were, if there was a continuation, could we, could we suggest a test area of paint removal?
Yes, I mean, the applicant would have to figure out, you know, if they were willing, what products they would use, which the Historic Resource Commission has had a number of properties that have been painted without approval. And they have taken off the paints. So I haven't asked Tommy Torbach what any other products were, but I know as well, the blue registry, the Foster Strong building is a paint.
Yep. Very successful. And honestly, my.
All the buildings that are previous, they're painted now. What's with the paintings, the neighbors, my little neighbor's brick is painted. I don't understand the whole process of it, to be honest with you. We're trying to improve the property in, in my mind, I'll be all I can for reasons that make no logical sense to me. I, I'm in this debate that the property is nicer. It's just that simple.
And we appreciate that, but we're trying to follow guidelines process and it could be the other.
But the properties are based on, it's already fact. We provided it all. Here's all the houses that are painted.
It could have been painted from before the guidelines existed.
No, I can look right at the brick. It's actually been painted several times.
I know one of the buildings that was up there was one that we have seen a high number of times, the red one, that has historically painted. It just got touched up. The partner's policy is if the brick has been painted previously before guidelines, it can be repainted because at that point it's oftentimes a softer, more stronger bit that wasn't done within like the last year, which is a much better time period to take any paint off as opposed to a decade or more.
Here's what I'm just breaking the break to. I, I'm an investor. I buy houses, I base houses. If I'm putting on a brand new roof, trying to put in all this net, try to put in a nice brick front, got the parking lot, doors, lights, to be honest with you, the rents will go up and I'll get more attractive renter, but they're not going to go up that much. In other words, I'm doing this, trying to make the building look good. If I gotta go in there and repill the paint and it's still going to look like this, I am less incentivized to go ahead and put the rest of the, it's not going to do me any good. I, I can do the wrong and I want to call quits and probably sell because it makes no logical sense. It's a money bet. Doesn't make sense. I'm trying to get the building to where it's at. And if I, if I gotta look at this brick and the tenant's coming up looking at the brick without the paint, there is no incentive for me to make this building look good because it's still going to have the same face. I can put up whatever clothes I got on, on. It's just face. It's a horrible thing to put, but you understand why I'm getting that? It makes no sense to make all the other improvements if I don't have the, the proper, do it and do it right. I can't do something halfway. I, I want to do it and do it the right way. That's going to make money. If it doesn't make money, then I got no choice but to cut the cord, power wash it, move.
Stan, I appreciate your investment in the property and community. And for us to do it right, we have to follow the, the guidelines.
Correct.
So this is, you know, we have, we have to, you know, take the stand here on some of the impact that.
There are so many other places that it's already done.
So the confirmation process is a complete driven process.
It's a what?
Complete driven process.
Okay.
So.
Somebody.
Somebody puts in, you know, complaint to the 301 portal, the co-officers go and investigate it, but no one is putting back complaints.
Find the strange that the rest of them all there. I'm here, I bought the building, I'm doing my best to make it nice. And now it's, there, there's certain things that's being allowed and certain things that's not being allowed. And everything I'm offering, there is no way that somebody looking at me telling me this is not the improvement of the building. It is an absolute knock out of the park.
You know, it's interesting. How long have you owned the building?
Less than about a year.
Less than about a year. This is so interesting that this case, these types of cases are coming in front of us more often from homeowners and from investors that buy properties in the neighborhood and don't understand more importantly, that it's a historic district. There are.
I, I understand.
It lays it out. And then what happens is, is they do the work because they think, I can get this work done. It's going to look better in my eyes. As Tim was saying, you know, there's a proper way. We have the guidelines all, i- i- if your guys would have picked up a directory or read anything, they would have known. You're thinking money. We're thinking historic pro- process. And, and the, the more important thing about this is connected to the pandemic and the things that have happened because of supplies and we were only doing the best thing and I'm only trying to make it better when in fact it was going against every single rule. So I think for us and this process, we can break it down into things and you can do the things that we've said are okay. And then the third thing, it's going to be up to you to make a choice. You can either fix it. You can find another alternative that you bring back to the office, or as you say, I'm going to have to walk away from it. Or you can, or you can do the process and, and I'm sure the building will only go up in value in this area. So I, I think, you know, we're going back and forth and I don't think there's anything to go back and forth about. It is what it is. And we have to stick with this process. Now, the other thing is if you think your neighbors or other investors are doing something they're not supposed to do, I would more than likely call that into the city and they will look into it because if it's a brick building that has been painted before, we've had any type of regulation on that stuff and they want to choose to paint it again and it's an appropriate color, they're allowed to do that. I mean, last year we just had the, the strip mall right on High Street and it's 70s brick and the guy wanted to paint it. You guys don't know what you're doing. I'm a developer. This is going to look better. This is going to be better for me. And if you look at it right now, it's still brick and he made that choice. So I, you know, I, I feel hard pressed and I understand where you're coming from. But that's what this body is supposed to be doing. So do you want to break it? Do you want to take it as one thing? How do you want to do it?
We'll break it.
Break it.
I don't know what we're going to proceed with. So I'll instantly repill those and probably seek an attorney.
That's fine.
Yeah, and I do want to touch on there were a couple of other things such as the landscaping and the asphalt in the back. I'm discussion of any problems with landscaping, with bushes, plantings.
Yeah.
No issue with.
Nope.
The issue with the asphalt, you know, do we want to look at something that has a little bit of permeability or is that an entire backspace okay at asphalt? I believe it is currently gravel.
It's all gravel.
It's all gravel, which is not.
Look, gravel's.
Parking surface.
Gravel's being kind. There's a few stones and a little grass.
Is there any concerns from the staff about the asphalt?
No, I, you know, just wanted to post to the commission if we wanted to, you know, add some permeability in case of, you know, water runoff.
Well, if you're talking about your neighbors, you're talking about your neighbors and runoff. You know, asphalt isn't a very kind thing as far as runoff goes, but, you know. And the alley, and the alley has no drainage, so.
I, I have bombs which is going stones. Again, the asphalt is me putting up the money to make it nicer. That's all it is.
I guess my only comment would be really watch your grading and your drainage so you don't create more problems.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with stone. I'm fine with asphalt.
That means that it's not sticking with me.
I, I would prefer the stone, you know, dumped, dumped properly, top dressed, but I don't, um, go stick to the asphalt. I don't, not opposed to the asphalt.
Yeah.
So would your preference be to stick with asphalt there or?
I get it. We get them both approved so I can make a choice on it. Because I don't know what I'm going to do at this point sincerely.
We can't approve gravel.
Uh, gravel, no. But if he's talking.
It's either no change or asphalt.
I don't understand. Why wouldn't you?
If all materials are typically talking parking papers or something that incorporates.
I think we submitted this.
I did the three or four gravel. They said.
The three or four gravel.
Yeah, gravel's on the approved parking surface.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that we are going to look at dividing this up into section A and section B. Section A will include everything that's submitted with recommendations on top of all four. And section B will be to separate out paint additions.
The doors, 70s, is that real? Can you staff approval of 70s style door?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So can I have any other discussion?
I'm good.
Can I have a motion for, for A?
So motion on application BB 221001653 West Star. Part A, which is the application as submitted, pulling out the painting from that application. So everything but the painting to approve as submitted with the following conditions. The front yard will, grading will remain and the concrete steps and apron will be replaced in kind. So with no retaining wall. And that the doors that have the first level doors with, that have the eight panel doors will be replaced with 70s appropriate doors as approved by staff. And the basement solid doors as proposed are acceptable. I get it.
Second.
I second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
I, I.
Any votes? Section A passes. And then can I have a motion for, for B?
Motion for application BB 221001653 West Star to remove the painting portion of the application and continue that for a future meeting.
Did I get that right? I think that's right. Continuing.
Continuing.
Painting as proposed, can, to continue painting portion as proposed to the future viewing?
Yes, yeah, that's correct.
Continuing the painting is okay?
Yes, but what, I mean, what do you want me to do at this point?
So, so that gives you some time to evaluate based on commentary from the commission and recommendations.
But if I'm understanding, there's nothing left to evaluate. It's either I go against you or I remove it. There's, that's all there is.
Okay, so it's that simple for you?
Well, that's what I've been asking. Is there?
So if we, if we vote on it and it is denied, then the process gets ahead.
Yes, and, you know, if we go down and it's denied, we'll run through what those options are. Because I wanted to make sure with you if you want to continue that because the other option is have it go down. And I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page of how this is moving forward. And then if we have to go down the rabbit hole denial, we'll get to that after this.
So it's either we vote on it right now or we continue it till next month.
I guess we'll continue it.
Yeah. So the motion was made to continue. One second.
I second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
I, I.
Those. Thank you. And I, I know it can be frustrating. It's, you know, this is a process and we are, we are trying to, you know, for the integrity of.
I will work with it as much as I can, but there's some things I think we, we aren't seeing on. I, I just, we're proposing the, the painted word.
Continuation gives you a chance to kind of reevaluate and look at, look at the language and then, and then come back.
I'm open for suggestions is what I'm saying. Somebody's got to answer this a whole years, but it sounds like answers go off the pain. And even said, which I would, I would gladly meet anybody there and be with you and have a look at it. I don't know how we can say that's sufficient because it just doesn't, I, I don't, I can't understand it.
I mean, Kimberly, you could work with him on options in terms of testing and removals and then companies that may be able to do this and methods.
And ultimately, if, if you'd like to move forward with retaining the paint, I will put it back on the agenda. And that way the commission can vote based on that. And I'll talk with my colleagues or who's had the approval to see if I can pick the direction of what other people have used that has been successful, but we can't recommend products, but I can always point you in that great direction of what other people have used. So it'll take me about three to five business days to get the minutes typed up and get letters typed out. If you're quicker than I am and submit anything, that's okay too. But we'll have a week from today to submit to the November agenda if you want to submit additional materials. If we have to skip a month, that's okay too. So just so you know what things are going to look like moving forward.
For you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next application.
Number eight is 360 and 362 West Hubbard Avenue. This application is to demolish an existing frame garage, construction, brick store, not number three store. New three car garage, the new garage, it has smooth smapboard siding, panels, steel garage doors, smooth floor panel, fiberglass passive doors and asphalt shimmy roof. The commissioners at the business meeting agreed with staff that site visit was warranted, but they trusted staff to complete it without any of them being present. Materials including lights, trim, roof, et cetera, were requested. Commissioners noted that the carriage house should be compatible in size to the house. The property for this project is a duplex. It's a larger carriage house warranted. It does the proposed design, taking the freedom of height and masing on the surrounding structures. Staff recommended continuation of the application to allow for the refinement of the design and HBO staff site visit. I know I told you guys at business meeting that I was going to do a site visit and I had COVID last week, so I was quarantined. And still finishing off the masking bit, so I'd rather not, you know, possibly spread disease. So I did touch base with Steve earlier today and you're trying to work something out for Tuesday or Wednesday of next week. So that should hopefully be before the next business meeting unless we're collecting sort of slows. But basis for recommendation is 3116.14, the standards for demolition, 3116.12, the standards for new construction.
Yeah. Say your name for the record, please.
D. Erlan Urban Order. Steve Hurd, Urban Order.
As you're in hand, you swear to tell the truth and not paint that's a truth?
Yes, yes.
Great. Any additional comments?
As far as discussing the demolition of the existing structure, I just gave Kimberly some additional photos of the inside because because we didn't have the option of having a site meeting. But the photos just show that the entire roof is new, relatively new. And I think to accomplish that, they basically nailed a little cripple stud on the tops of the wall to attach the new rafters and the new roof sheathing. And then basically this the stud walls are just sitting on dirt and rotten from the bottom up. So there's no foundation, there's no slab. And the entire roof is new, the overhead door, the alley side of the garage has been altered from what I imagine is some other priority to come. Yeah, some carriage door or something like that. So anyway, we are trying to do a site visit and I think that all of those things will become clear, but I just wanted to create some more funness.
I think at our business meeting, it, it was, we were going to see, basically it was more the detail, lights, any kind of trim board or anything like that. And then the site visit to confirm.
Yeah, so we didn't. We will submit lights and cut sheets and all those things, but we really wanted to be here so we could discuss the demolition of the existing garage in case if we have to keep it, then we would propose something else. So we just wanted to do sort of a conceptual review with the commission to make sure that we're, everybody's going in the same direction.
Right. And there's not much left of the original structure. It's not particularly contributing or special to re, to rebuild it. We'd have to essentially tear it down and recreate it. So is it, is that worth that? So.
So obviously kind of a two-part thing here. Demolition is, is that appropriate? And if the commission agrees, that's kind of pending staff site review. Sending comments there. And so obviously the second part can't happen unless that, that occurs, but applicants are asking for just any kind. But applicants are asking for just any commentary from a conceptual level.
From what we saw in our business meeting, those people were there, we were, um, okay, the demolition, it's just a matter of going through the process.
Okay. And then conceptually for a new garage location, um, again, it's not a carriage house, it's just more of a garage.
I was a little scared when I heard three stories, because I was like, it'd be like Urban Order to try to pull that.
We'll propose that and then scale back. There is an open question about the doors. Is there a reason you went with, uh, two doors instead of three for the?
It's not quite wide enough to do three, and that's the lock with, in, in order to stay three feet off the property lines, and that's why we went that way.
Yeah, the, the overall property, we're still waiting on a survey, which is the other reason why we don't have, like, real construction drawings. But the lot is forty feet wide, so it's a three foot, somehow we can only get a thirty-four foot wide garage.
Okay, so no variance is on.
Right, we're trying to with no variance, so.
Okay, so generally. Do we know that this is older than forty years? Could be contributing, I mean, is that, I guess, in that?
So I believe so.
It's that garage, but there was any garage.
And the detailing on it looks pretty nice.
Yeah. It's an easier road if it's. Yeah, I mean, it's, from a, from afar, it doesn't look terrible, but actually getting up close to the details of the, to building.
Well, I think the door kind of makes it look a lot better than it did once you get past the door.
Exactly.
Comes into focus. I walked by it like me.
Any other comments from the commission?
Respect.
Generally in a positive direction, obviously if, if things go well with the, um, site review, resubmission of the material, opposite those details of flights and things we're asked for at the business meeting.
Absolutely.
I'm pretty keen. Do I have a motion?
Kevin, make a motion for our constituents. All right, uh, motion to continue, uh, excuse me, for application BB two, two, one, zero, zero, one, seven, three sixty Hubbard Ave, to continue the application.
Second. All those in favor?
I, I.
I suppose.
So just for clarification, if we're continued, we're probably not going to have drawings for next month, but.
Okay.
But we'll continue it again, so.
Well, um.
What do you want in the application?
No, no, you can, you don't have to put in the application, but if you want to wait till the following month, that, that's okay too. We're still going to try to get that site, because, you know, because with my luck, something else will probably.
Break the leg, so you're saying. Oh, great.
Never think of going to be teaching.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, application number nine, nine three North High Street, do we have the applicant here?
Save that one for later.
Yes, so come back. I'm just making a quick note. We'll probably swing back around at the very end. Unless somebody comes up, so that means we move on to number ten, which is twelve thirty-one Highland Street. Which, I also see Bradley is, is he presenting as well?
Uh, he'll be here.
I see him out there, that's just why I was asking.
Okay.
I'm not sure if he wants to come in to present.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be presenting, he'll be answering questions, so never expect him.
All right. So we'll swear pen and, if he comes in after I finish reading the staff report, so. This is twelve thirty-one Highland Street. This application is to enlarge an existing thirty-floor window from thirty-two inches by forty-eight inches to thirty-two inches by fifty-two inches and install a Quaker brighten case mount window with black flame. Commissioners at the business meeting thought that the closed window was too big, they requested extra photos to show as there was some concern about being uncovered in the previous openings. And let's note that the openings on the rear look a little off as, uh, there were probably additional openings at one point. HBO staff has requested Alex buildings of these services to confirm the minimum size of the new breast window. I'm still waiting. Um, so they are probably pretty busy because I think I hit up their general intake inbox. So I want to know what the answer to that question is. Now, the existing vinyl siding was repaired and replaced in twenty nineteen. Uh, the COA also includes replacing doors and the windows in the house were replaced in twenty nineteen with different COA. Staff recommends approval of the application as submitted with any all clarifications to be submitted to staff prior to reviewing, um, approval issuance of certificate. Basis for recommendation is thirty-one sixteen point eleven, use standards for alteration.
Uh, can you, can you state your name for the record, please?
Uh, Andrew Burek.
You swear to tell the truth and not tell the truth?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Uh, any additional comments that have been on the application?
Uh, no, other than the basic just that we're expanding the height of the window by four inches.
Comments from the commission?
It's not so much the size of the window, it's the fact that all the windows in this house are double hung windows, it's not. That's what's throwing off its proportions.
Yep.
And if it's not feasible to put a double hung window because you don't need the E breast size, then you can at least basically fake one, so it has a, a heavier horizontal mullion, so.
Yep.
It at least appears like a, um, double hung window with all the others. As just one big opening, it's not appropriate for this time period.
And we've done that a lot where they had to do that.
Yeah, and Quaker knows how to do that.
Second representative, you can state your name for the. I'm sorry, Bradley Bluman, Rhythm Architecture. Good, you swear to tell the truth and not tell the truth? I do. Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions?
What comments?
That's, I think that's the only one I think, you know, spot on. It's just, it really puts the proportions off without it being double.
Yeah, it needs to appear as a double.
Yep.
Yeah, so could that be a condition of approval to maybe like?
It just needs to be submitted to staff.
Yeah, so, um, the chance that it's not a window on the approved windows list, is that still looking for the commission?
Quaker isn't?
Well, Quaker is, I just, you know, if it happens that, you know, something pops up and the case mount window that looks like a double hung is not on there. If you're confident that Quaker can do that kind of look, then I'm okay, but I wanted to cover all the bases.
I know Quaker can do that.
Okay.
So you'd be looking, because they have different size, uh, applied mullions, make sure it's not, you know, the five eighths inch one, it needs to be the one. So they, they make it more, um, an inch to an inch, so it appears like it's a meeting, you know.
And, uh, we can submit, uh, submit it from a manufacturer that shows the thickness for staff, if that's okay.
Yeah, or the window schedule, might be good to have all those dimensions.
Sure.
Then it's in keeping with the, what you kind of see on the picture of the front, the thing with that siding.
Okay, any other comments? We have a motion?
Motion on the application BB two, two, one, zero, zero, one, nine, twelve thirty-one Highland Street, uh, to approve the application with the following conditions, uh, that the, uh, window, the casement window, uh, have a, uh, decorative, well, mullion, uh, decorative mullion, uh, imitating a meeting rail, uh, built into the window, uh, to be consistent with the rest of the house. Second, I have a subject to staff approval.
I second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
I.
Any votes? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, application number eleven, ten twenty-five Highland. Um, this application is the result of work already completed. This is to attain a rearboard deck. Uh, the deck is two heights, the upper portion is ten feet feet by twelve feet wide, while the lower portion is twenty-two feet, ten inches wide by nine foot eight inches wide. And the commission at the business meeting requested current photos of the deck from the rear of the yard facing the house. Uh, they want to be able to see what the interior elevation looks like. Uh, HBO staff, uh, does consider decks as a feature and does not support them. As evident from the Google Street View, there has been a deck in the backyard for years. Deck was replaced without approval prior to it being sold. Staff recommends approval of the application as submitted with any clarification, um, be submitted to staff for review and approval prior to issuance of certificate. Basis for staff recommendations is to be called thirty-one sixteen point eleven, use standards for alteration. And I didn't receive a, no, that's not that, this one, never mind, I'm getting my numbers confused, not the speaker.
Okay, if you can state your name for the record, please?
Yeah, Zachary Palmer.
Do you swear to tell the truth and not tell the truth?
I do.
Yes, yeah. Uh, and if, do you have anything to add to the?
Yeah, sure, um, unfortunately it was just a fraudulent sale. Um, I went through an exhaustive and, you know, inspection process and everything like that. And on all the documentation, you know, there was no pending, uh, unpermitted construction or anything, you know, of this nature that was disclosed to me. Um, I probably wouldn't have purchased the house without kind of that space in the backyard for, for meeting and things like that. Um, the house has kind of turned into a money pit and there have been a lot of leaks and things that have kind of depleted my emergency fund. So I'm just hoping that I don't have to, you know, do anything major, um, due to these unfortunate circumstances. You know, I'm obviously willing to kind of spruce it up or do what I need to do. But, um, while I do understand that it's not within, you know, the historic district vote and everything like that, you really can't see it at all unless you're above the house. You can't see it from the back alley or anything, so.
So, uh, again, clarification timing of the deck, there was a, there was a deck that was added well, well before a replacement, in kind of replacement of.
Yeah.
Deck that was prior to your purchase.
Yeah, I just purchased it February.
Now, you can kind of tell from the, um, listing photos of the decks, it doesn't look like the deck's been stained yet.
Uh, it's got some older paint, I would guess that it was probably painted years ago, like maybe three, three plus years ago.
So the house is blue or green now?
It's kind of, I don't know, yeah.
So this number, page number one, is it the same paint job?
Yes. Different lighting, but.
Okay.
Another clarification, approving this would mean the deck stays?
Yes.
Okay. Denying would mean the deck.
It's be demolished.
Be demolished?
Presumably, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, or if there was a kind of halfway point or other solution that the commission, you know, could suggest.
And is it possible to prove it to remain, but as soon as you make any alteration prepares or whatever, it must be demolished?
I suppose that could be as kind of a maintenance item further down the road.
Yeah, that's given that we catch it. Um, I'm getting a little, uh, frustrated with flippers that are in the neighborhood that, uh, do things very quickly and sell, and people that are inspecting houses are doing their job in a historic district. And here we have, and you're probably not happy about the situation either. So I think that, um, my only two comments is it looks like the end of this, the, the right-hand side needs a little bit of, uh, work to finish it off. And then I think your idea of putting some stipulation on property that if anything else happens, we have to readdress this.
So it may, it may just be the photo, um, there is landscaping, like mulch along that side. You just, I have all those leaves blown out now, um, you just can't really see it right there.
Does it be end facade of that? See where it's not finished like the other ones, it needs like a facial board across it.
Okay.
I don't, what does everyone else think?
Yeah, there's this gray area.
I know it's gray.
Deck and, um, floating.
Because everyone would love to do that on the back of their house.
So I think it's, it's the way it's. It's the way it's detailed. Like a low platform without the railing, it's different than a traditional suburban deck. So I for one am a bit, right, in circumstances to that type of construction. I do agree that finishing that one end is necessary. Um, I, I'm not as convinced that we need a stipulation for eventual approval soon.
If, if I could add, um, it, I think, um, like you mentioned, they probably replaced it at some point. I think that when the extension was added to the back of the house, those back doors were added and you can't, um, the elevation from the back door to the ground, there would need to be some sort of step there or something anyway, to get to the yard, yeah.
That, that would be the alternative, teaching. Is the, you know, is the deck and porch, is it tied into the, the house? Is it connected or is it truly floating and disconnected?
I think that one side of it, I think this lower side is floating and the back part, the very small section that's raised, may be connected.
Are there any footings or anything, or is this just on the grass or the land? Because it looks like it's a little, got a little, little tilt to it, and it looks, there's a few things that just look off from a construction perspective.
It's definitely solid. I'm not too, I honestly didn't blame the, do anything to the house except that a garage, and that's when this guy have got uncovered, when it was a full.
Things that look off to me, so, because obviously, so this is unpermitted in general, right? I mean, that's why, otherwise it would have been caught, but that should be permitted through.
Well, bottom, it's not connected.
No, it's not.
That's under thirty inches.
Okay.
High, or it's square footage is the other trigger.
Yep.
Okay.
So wrapping this up, what do you want to do?
I'm okay with the condition, treating that exposed edge.
Allowing it to remain until it's like it's altered or?
Well, yeah, I mean, it, the alterations moving forward, yeah.
That's the.
Appropriated to review. Okay. Not necessarily renewable, but it can be reviewed.
And if I wanted to, it, it does, like, it does need repainted. If I wanted to update that, I would just submit an application as I erected that piece.
That's a big place to start.
Okay.
Showing paint, color.
Okay.
Okay, third motion?
Motion for application twenty-two, ten, oh, two, zero, ten twenty-five Highland Street, as submitted with stipulation that, um, the, uh, the unfinished, uh, facial piece gets finished. And what would be the wording on this? Or we're saying there isn't a wording on stipulation, it would just have to come?
You could always, you know, deal with, um, future modifications to come before.
Okay, and let's add future modifications to come in, uh, commission. And the last piece of the applicant, get in touch with the, uh, historic commission office when they're going to incorporate painting the deck.
I, I'm assuming I already needed to get approval on a stain for the fence, so I'm assuming I would just match that.
Yep, cool, yep.
Second, second. And you have a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Votes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you want to see a follow up.
Yes, it'll be about a two, three, or two, about three to five business days. I typically open minutes and then I typically go in order of here and get things out to people, so.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to application number twelve, which is two oh one, two oh five West First Avenue. This application is to remove a woman siding and the stores below. Construct a new front porch on most of the practice grounds. From floor to ceiling, the new porch would have a long foot, three inch porch clearance. Construct new cover, side porch installed column to the rear port. All new porch shingles with magnetic zipping. Remove board in the third story windows on the east elevation and north elevation to follow. How appropriate at this point we're going and why you can actually existing windows. The commissioners at the business meeting requested HBO staff including previous COA and concept materials from the previous review. HBO staff hasn't included those materials. During the conceptual review, the previous commissioners have supported the addition of the front porch. City code thirty-one sixteen point eleven, these standards for alteration specifically three. Each property shall be recognized as a product of its own time. Alterations that have no historical basic and which seek to create an earlier appearance shall be discouraged. So I pose, is this alteration appropriate? Or is it more in line with the same part of city code number ten? Whenever possible, any addition or alteration shall be accomplished so that a future removal will be done in care and essential form and integrity of the structure. The sandstone maps show that a single porch west of the bay originally existed. And then by nineteen twenty-one, there was a second porch to the east of the bay. Both of which were moved at some point. So staff recommends approval of the application as submitted with any and all qualifications to be submitted to HBO staff for review and approval prior to issuance of our certificate. Basis for recommendation is city code thirty-one sixteen point eleven, these standards for alteration.
And the other candidate for the record?
Julie Bullock.
Do you swear to tell the truth? Nothing but the truth?
I do. Uh, this one has been before this commission a couple of times. We were also doing a carriage house in the back. And actually I showed you one rendition and then came back with some recommendations to split it. I actually thought it was approved at that time, but there was no record, so that's, and it expired.
And we said in the business meeting, we did a lot of work on this.
Yeah. Yeah, we, and then he did, he did remove a section of the siding. It looks like it's in good repair. Of course, until he gets it all off, you know, we don't know, but he's optimistic. And in order to remove the siding, you know, in order to do the porch, he wants to remove the siding first, so. The nonoriginal siding.
So do we have anything else? I think we were okay with everything.
I thought you were too. You know, some people.
Don't put words in my mouth.
Beating you too. She's here, she's the next application too.
Yeah.
Oh, Lord. The next.
But in all seriousness, do we have the motion?
Sure.
Yeah, you have a motion on the application, BB two two one zero zero two one, two oh one West First Ave. Motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. The next application is number thirteen. This is thirty-seventeenth Anne Street. And this application includes two parts, one is an actual, the action item is the variances, which include a minimum number of parking spaces of the R four residential district, the R four area district requirements. Fronting is minimum five yard and the rear yard to allow a rear yard zero square feet in lieu of the required twenty-five percent for a home fronting the alley. The conceptual repeat part is to construct a new carriage house along the alleys. The carriage house will allow for the parking of two cars. The structure would be twenty feet, no, twenty-eight feet tall by twenty-five feet deep by twenty-four feet wide. Materials proposed include dimensional asphalt shingles, the one over one windows from the preach list, the chicanal man doors and a single garage door. Commissioners at the business meeting noted that the scale is off. They did not think the size of the proposed garage is appropriate. It was noted that the proposed garage carriage house was as big as the house. Typically, larger carriage houses were behind grand buildings. HBO staff has included the sandstone maps in the materials. The sandstone maps show a single story garage was present at the site constructed sometime between nineteen twenty-two and nineteen fifty-five. That garage no longer remains. So I do want to pose the question, would a single story or a story and a half two part garage be more appropriate? And is the commission with okay, is okay with the garage doors being slightly off center? The metal bridge is needed over the fridge vents and the shingles need to be chosen. Staff supports recommendation for the variances would be qualifications or modifications with the commission. And then we just need to provide feedback on that proposed garage. Basis for staff recommendation is thirty-one sixteen point twelve, these standards for construction.
Hey, so.
Ten.
One out there in a second. If you could state your name, please.
Yep.
Are you just speaking or are you going to?
He might speak, so.
Okay, well.
This is my first time ever in this place.
Go ahead and swear.
Say your name for the.
Yep, William Stone.
Okay. And if you can, do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So Tyler Poolland sent one to come speak on this, but I didn't see him here. Which I was just confusing, we would have had some, my apologies.
No worries.
So I wasn't sure, the concern regarding scale, whether, whether that was in reference to height or footprint, so I wasn't clear on those comments.
Both. I think it was height.
So I did, can you mean this?
Yes.
Get one hurt.
Yeah.
So I did, I lowered it about, it's about four feet. What was submitted.
We get a.
Thank you.
I guess my, it's a bit of an eclectic alley, should I say. There's an apartment building at one end of the alley that's, you know, a clear two story. And at the other end of the alley where it terminates, there is a, a three car carriage house that was recently built. So I thought there was some precedent in this alley for, you know, a little higher than normal structure. And also, of course, you know, we would like to have a garage, so there's a certain footprint that that requires, so.
I think the proportions are better. I recently saw.
Yeah.
And then on that back facade, there are no doors whatsoever.
I mean, I could put some in there.
It's just.
Put some windows.
Face now. Opening. But besides that, I'm I'm okay.
Are you still wanting to speak, Tyler?
Yes.
All right. Does that, do you think so will have order commissioners?
Yes, thank you.
Final.
All right. Did they go already to the square and Tyler for thirty-seventeenth Anne?
Yes.
That's what kind of a costly way is you walk in the door, but.
Bring it out here.
Yeah, do you, you want a second to breathe in?
Do you need to catch your breath? What's going on here?
Uh, no, I don't need a second, sorry.
Step up to the podium, please. Let you get up there if you can state your name for the record.
Okay, my name is Tyler Poole. I'm here in a non-wood company's capacity.
This one with. Swear to it.
Yeah.
You can raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth or nothing but the truth?
I did.
You have three minutes.
Okay. I'm just here to speak in opposition to the proposed carriage house at thirty-seventeenth Avenue. The carriage house project is inappropriate for the specific location due to the small lot size. Zero setback leaves no room for trash pickup or forcing other, onto others' property and then the nature of just short term rentals. So I'm in a neighbor, the property owner of three two one Tappan Street. For the most part, the property is well maintained and managed. The only issue is the nature of short term rentals. You don't know who your neighbor is every night. Most nights, you know, ninety percent of nights is fine. You know, other nights there are beer pong nights and, you know, hockey game day nights. And, you know, we've got a one year old with another on the way, so it's, you know, we want to raise a family in our home and it's hard to do that with a short term rental next door. And with that, you know, I just worry that the issue is going to be exacerbated by another short term rental on, I think, one of the small slots in Victorian Village. So, you know, you look at one of the, how many of the issues are? The last thirty-three hundred square feet, that's thirty feet wide by a hundred and ten long. The plan would put the carriage house, you know, between twenty-five and thirty feet from my, you know, one year old son's bedroom with windows at the same elevation. And, you know, like I said, the person could be spending a nice weekend away or they could be there to, you know, scream holler and play their ball. And then all of the precedent images in the package are on Neil Avenue. These Neil Avenue lots are a hundred and sixty-five feet long versus, you know, a hundred and ten on this Tappan Street lot. And, you know, the hundred and sixty-four feet is a lot further away from the neighboring homes when it's pushed all the way back there. So that, you know, deeper lot, I think it's a carriage house that are free use. Something like this is harder. And then a big thing is the zero setback on the back lot, pushing it all the way to the back means that, you know, trash sits out in between, on properties between the neighboring properties. So if the garage and the entrance ways are all the way pushed back towards the, on, with a zero setback, that just means all trash is going to go in a neighboring property and there's nowhere for it to sit. Which it means would go into my property, I, you know, with that part of my garage, which, you know, feels like it's not the right, you know, the right use for what we're trying to do here. And then, you know, I also feel that Tappan Street is one of the most well preserved areas in all Victorian Village. The homes are, you know, you know, for, built for middle class people. And I think it's really cool that, you know, your living home is built in nineteen oh seven. The issue is, you know, a carriage house back there is, you know, a forty foot tall Neil Avenue home and has the stature to kind of hide what's.
We are at three minutes.
This house. So thank you, Neil, my time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think there might be some confusion. There's no zero setback. We have three foot side yards and actually an eight foot setback off the alley to provide the required maneuvering. So I don't.
That's got to be one of my questions of.
Yeah, so I think maybe.
So that would push the, the carriage house eight feet off of the alley.
Well, the property line, but, you know, where the line of the alley actually is can vary a little. It's not always the property line.
So it would push it eight feet off of, so closer to the homes on Tappan Street.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so.
So that would probably mean one eighty?
Right, and I, I know, you know, I understand your concern about the door, but we.
Yeah, sorry.
And I, you know, when I look at density and I look at appropriateness, I always look at the square footage and percentage of lot coverage. You know, and we're under the fifty percent requirement for the city of Columbus for lot coverage. So I feel like when you look at that density and you see that you're under what the city normally requires. I think we're quite a distance away from the, the neighbor's windows and it's not a direct view. So hopefully that would alleviate some of that concern. But I think overall, given that the zoning code says our scale is appropriate for the neighborhood, you know, in terms of footprint and size, I feel like that's something that should be waived, you know, considered. Most of the other properties have some sort of structure in the rear along this alley, either one and a half stories or two or, you know, some one story. So I think there is precedent in this alley. My client's intention is to use this for his personal use or when family comes to town, et cetera. They've moved to Delaware, but they work downtown, so sometimes they use this, you know, or their, I guess, when they don't want to drive back up to Delaware. So that's the intention right now. And I would say this, this lot size is actually fairly typical in Victorian Village. You know, even when you just look at the, the map that I provided on the site, so.
And you work here, the neighbor, they brought the scale of it down, so it's not as, as big as it was.
I wouldn't ask, you know, so this is six variants to try to say that this is okay. So, I mean, Julie, can you address that as to why, you know, I mean, these parents, these, these rules exist for a reason. Why we think that this should not follow six different codes?
I need to pull them up so that I can address that.
If we can maybe take those step by step, because I feel like there's some conflict between.
So part of the issue is that the city of Columbus, when you it'll take me a second, but I can pull them up.
First one's parking.
Parking, which.
Parking, yeah, that's fairly obvious, why that's required. You, whenever you do a carriage house, you always need a variance for to allow for two single families on a, on a structure. The lot size is smaller than what I always say, the suburban zoning code requirements, which I heard they're going to be modifying, so hopefully that comes soon. But that's the, for the area district requirements. The fronting is just because it's not a public street, so therefore that variance is required. The minimum side yard is for the existing house. So I would say the first four are pretty much a variance for every carriage house I've ever done. The last one, the rear yard, the city looks at it a little differently in rear yard. What they do is they assign all the rear yard to the front house and give the back house none of the rear yard. So again, when you do a carriage house, you always have a rear yard variance. So it's, it's just, I don't.
A couple of things that jump out to me there, so can we get clarification on the, the third variance? Offer two single family homes on a lot of thirty-three hundred square feet. Where five hundred square feet for a single dwelling is permitted?
So, so code says in this area that a lot has to be five thousand square feet.
Five thousand.
And obviously, none of these lots are five thousand square feet.
There's a micro unfair, that's what it says, five, not five thousand.
So any variance, yeah, yeah. So any, anytime you would ask for whatever kind of a variance, that one will always come up. Because again, they want you to recognize the existing condition and apply a variance to it.
So I guess my, my question about one is, you know, what, you know, comment for these, the required variances based on the lot size? You know, what point does it become?
So that's when.
So that, that evaluation of what is maybe the standard for, is the standard variance, standard lot size to trigger kind of the allowance of carriage houses?
So what I always do in that question, because I get clients who'd say, you know, take this as big as you can and whatever. I always look at footprint and I, and I use that fifty percent requirement, which we're not asking for a variance for, because we need that. I think we're like forty-five or forty-three, something like that. So to me, that's how I always evaluate density. I say, okay, what's the square footage of the garage? What's the square footage of the house and the porch footprint? Is that less than fifty percent?
But, but it's also, it's also the relationship between the, the carriage house.
Right.
That dimension is what comes into play, not just area, but.
Yeah, yeah.
That proximity of that to other contributing structures. So that's, that's what I'm curious about. Minimum side yard, so the new structure triggers variance because the existing home is technically out of variance, but the application is within. The applicant, the new structure is not requiring the variance, it's.
It's the existing.
So I, I guess my caution there is that if we were to. So I, I guess my caution there is that if we were to approve that variance, that's, that then allow this application to come back with a larger footprint and stuff.
Yeah, so as Julie has in variance, they are just doing that for the existing house.
Or the existing...
Which we've seen variance is similar to that, but, you know, it's, the houses have been built on the lot, the lot line, or like one foot off. And, you know, if they're doing something that kind of takes up a variance that, you know, kind of dominoes that we see here doing best, but you also have to get the variance, you know, to include the existing condition, the existing condition, just to bring everything up to, you know, code.
So, and this, I would just say, this acceptance of this variance on the main house does, does not let you, like, do the back one to two-point tip. It's only relative to the specific, and zoning has gotten much more specific about that. They ask us, you know, to be very specific about what the variance is required for. So, I mean, technically, I could take it off the table, but they always wish me to put it on there, so...
I understand, yeah, that clarification was perfect there. Any other comments? Other concerns with lot size or, I mean, that's the only one that jumps out to me at this point is if lot size is an issue or not?
Any other discussion? Motion?
Most likely the variance is...
Well, the variance is, the action is an action. I don't care. So we're voting?
Yeah, voting to recommend the variance.
Okay, motion on application, BB 2210022, 317 West Tappan. Motion to approve, recommend, recommend the variance.
Yes, recommend approval.
Recommend approval of the variances.
Good second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in paper?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And can I say, were there any further comments on the design of the carriage house? I knew Jeff was saying about the windows on the back. Was there any other concerns?
The lower height of the house.
The lower height is better.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so for this, I would like to request a five-minute break.
We'll take a five-minute break?
Right. That and simply the...
Take a break.
Oh, Jack, yes. Yeah, there's no, no...
I was going to say, I was like, come on.
Man.
And also yell at you if you don't.
Guess I do need to get a watch.
What happens when you don't have a watch that tells you what to do?
I said, my ass.
It's not always, I forget, it was like, I'll be standing for forty-five minutes making dinner, finally sit down, it's like, it's time to stand up. Like, no, it's not yet. I just spent forty-five minutes making cookies. I am sitting here eating right now.
One of the clients, because they, they installed applications on their computer, that it's like every hour or whatever. They don't, like, physically stop doing stuff at their computer, it won't let you do anything. It's like forces you to...
Oh my God, that would make my blood pressure...
Right. They're like, they're like, oh, I can't do anything. I have to sit here for fifteen seconds or whatever. Just like, okay, that's one way to board the break.
Okay.
Almost there.
I think we're out of line.
Three more applications, probably?
Do we want to check on number nine again, just in case?
Yes. So is the applicant here for nine eight three North High Street? All righty, it looks like we just have our two conceptuals. We'll swing back at the very end, just to make absolutely sure that they haven't been overly delayed. But we'll move on to number fourteen, which is nine six one Hunter Avenue. This is a conceptual application to remove the existing concrete side box along the south yard. And that, remove the front iron fencing, as well as the steps to the deck porch, the new stoop. The existing privacy fence on the south property line to be removed. Landscape plantings, garden boxes and shed. And sell a six-foot horizontal wood privacy fence along the property line. Seven feet, eight inches of the proposed fence on the south elevation will be a horizontal half fence, which would be thirty inches tall. And sell a five-foot wide by three feet, deep by six-foot tall plastic tool shed. And sell a thirty-two-inch black steel fence with gate along the east elevation. Construct a raised neater patio directly west of the house with a raised paper patio directly west of that. Add paving stones in place of the concrete path with the brick-and-mortar patio. The pavers in the patio areas are to have lines through the base. Gravel parking to measure approximately nineteen feet, eight inches wide by sixteen feet, three inches deep. Move the house body, the BM hill navy, turn the BM horizon, and the accent in front of tacking would be the BM and was on the swim. And install a shade sail to over the patio. The supports would be solid and strong. Install new exterior lighting from the deck house to have fourteen and quarter inch tall lights. Front patios have a twenty-four inch wall light, rear patio to have a scum. The commission at the business meeting requested a scale measured drawing of the fence elevation. Transitioning from the six-foot fence to the half fence, the applicant has provided a rendering on this transition, as well as noted that they're just replacing the fence material that is existing. The proposed gate for the fence was noted by the commission as it may not be appropriate. The cap product sheet for the shade sale was requested. It was previously included and can be found on page thirty-six of the PDF. It does kind of run into the other product information that's already above it, though. Confirmation on how the shade sales supports are to be extended to the ground were requested. This was provided just a little later on in the staff report. Gravel is not an approved parking substrate per CEC code thirty-three twelve point forty-three. Required surface for parking and alternative material is required, and HBO staff would encourage affordable material. HBO staff requires that privacy fences are brought back two, three feet or behind the first window for a visual separation of the front view of the yards and to let the porch stand as some. Additionally, there is precedent for drawing the fence back, as this is how all privacy fences have been approved. When staff rules have been issued, issued. Typically, patio pavers upgrade are recommended, so I want to propose to the commission, are the proposed step patios too much of an alteration, or are they appropriate? And can the shade sail be considered a temporary object? Or will the tall-toilette supports create a visual intrusion in the area? The applicant has clarified that the shade sail post should be set in the ground at floss line with the post being surrounded by concrete. HBO staff does not support the lights on in front of the house as proposed and has suggested that just the lights by the front doors remain. This is conceptual, so the commissioner should offer some feedback that can be utilized by the applicant to further refine the proposal for a future review day. Basis for staff recommendation is thirty-three twelve point forty-three. Required surface for parking, thirty-one sixteen point thirteen, these standards for site improvements. Victorian Village guidelines on fences and yards, specifically what is appropriate, what is not appropriate. MCD code thirty-one sixteen point eleven, these standards for alteration. I'm just gonna let you through.
State name for the bar, please?
Terrific Bar.
Okay. Make sure you swear to tell the truth about the truth.
Yes.
Anything to add to the application?
No, nothing to add. Basically, we're just wanting to do an exterior landscape kind of overhaul. This would be our ideal situation, what you see in the rendering, but we're completely open to whatever you, you all want to approve. So everything, again, is, it's up to you all for approval, and we're open to those changes.
First of all, I appreciate the level of thought, graphics, the communication of the, the idea. It's very well done.
What should we start with?
Yeah, maybe start with the, anything in the house?
Guess I agree with the lighting comment, so that's easy.
In terms of fencing along the front, what are the conditions that are typical on that street? Then I guess there is a fence there now.
Are you talking about the front lower fence?
Yes.
The condition right now is that there is an existing iron fence. It's, I mean, rusted and broken. It honestly doesn't really serve its purpose of being a fence. Leave my dogs get out a bit all the time, like, other rodents come into it. So it doesn't necessarily serve its purpose. So we would like to replace it, just because we are doing a full kind of exterior overhaul overhaul so that it matches kind of the updatedness of the exterior.
So I'd say then with the fence, trying to find one that's more in keeping with the character of the existing one?
Okay. Would you be more specific?
The fence that's represented in the graphic to the, to the right.
Yeah, the badge connection.
Seven existing.
But that is the existing neighbor's fence.
Yeah, so the, the relationship between those two, it's a little off.
Okay.
It needs to be worked out in their rendering and kind of just...
Okay. Would you prefer to just match it, like, just match the design?
Of... So the, the existing fence, the top rail is set down four to six inches. The verticals extend past it, the one that's proposed, the rail is at the top.
Oh, okay.
Difference in character.
As long as, as long as this rail is continuous, that seems reasonable.
Yeah.
So I, I actually like that move of not having the hoops. It separates the properties.
Yeah, it doesn't have to have a hoop.
That, that, that line of the rail, the rail with pickets extending above, I think is a, is a nice move. And also the historical detail of the occasional post that is in the post. And it's a, it's a really standard kind of detail on these historic neighborhoods. I think that's another, another one. It just gives a little bit more detail and character to it that's appropriate with historic condition.
Yeah, there should be an included picture of what our current, um...
Yeah, so it's really, it's really kind of matching that, almost matching that in kind, is the, the thought there.
Is that into the material or is it aluminum? That's okay.
I think aluminum is okay, but matching the design. Okay, so material-wise, aluminum or iron or steel? Right, that's...
Metal, but silks match. We want to hit the, the privacy fence next. And the front, which is existing.
The horizontal boards are existing?
No, but it was...
The condition of how the fence transitions and where it transitions to the left.
We can see it here in the picture. I, I agree with staff's recognition, and usually those are pulled back, kind of on the porch up there.
Yeah, that fence is much more of a back-end or deken.
Right, I'd rather pull that back even past that, basically the back of porch.
Yeah, so the, the shorter metal fence should wrap the corner.
All right, so wrap the corner all the way back to the front door, is what you're saying?
Yeah, is that the front door and the back of the porch there, I assume?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that will extend beyond where it is today.
The metal fence?
Yeah, well, the, the return of the shorter section, we're saying it.
That all becomes...
Yeah, yeah, but it, but it comes back further than that for me.
Yes.
Yeah.
I would argue that it doesn't have to go back over the door.
I mean, I think it kind of looks a little funny with the porch if you split it.
So staff could recommend that, that kind of, the privacy fence start more in the backyard, like, behind that porch? Except that were staff, that would definitely be pulling back, so we have that visual separation of this is the front of the house and this is the backyard. So it's not kind of like creating a wall of, you know, the facade fence. Not that this is necessarily, you know, doing that visually here, but to keep consistency down.
What, what was the goal of that portion of fence, to create a visual privacy from the porch to neighboring property? Or is it just aesthetic and kind of matching?
We were just going to keep it as it is now and just replace the material. So whatever you prefer to how, no, whatever height starts where, we're open to that.
Sorry, you, you kind of clear with our recommendation that, that lower metal fence extends all the way back, you know, the length of the porch to the front door.
Yes.
And that's where you transition to it.
Yes. Great question.
Anything else, you guys?
Backyard?
Backyard is maybe the only thing that, you know, it's the, the shade structure is, stands out.
So there's no raised decking, right?
Yeah. There's a raised...
Space.
Extend it stupidly.
But it's not a suburban wood deck.
Yeah, so the shade can't be permanent, not permanent.
Well, I do have a question about the lights hanging in space.
Those aren't going to happen.
Okay. Curious how they would have happened. Yeah.
And I have a hard time arguing something is temporary when it, there's poles that are set.
Yeah.
Yeah, is there any way those can, so a lot of our stuff that we do that looks permanent but isn't permanent, that they actually, there's a casing that the pole could sit in, so potentially it could be done. So that would probably be the, so it's taken down, you don't see it.
Sure, that makes sense.
Yep.
I'm going to know if you might want to check with the apartment building and zoning, just because it is over their paper requirements and about if it permit is needed as well.
Okay.
Driveway.
For the part of your neighborhood.
Yeah, gravel's out, so we're going to do
asphalt or papers or impermeable papers, which is choices, right?
Impermeable.
Impermeable or grass, papers or grass. And, you know, from an aesthetic standpoint, it's something comparable to what you're showing, but the impermeable.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Any other comments?
There was a comment about the gate not being appropriate, could you clarify? Of the wood gate? I'm assuming the good, the wood gate.
That's not too, that's same.
No, I think the problem with that was, is that little, that little storage thing threw us off. That's what I thought was.
Because it feels like I got, I was, I was on some work.
Yeah. Bad representation of materials, that's what I was saying.
I, yeah, they had this.
I'm fine with this, I got, I'm old, I got confused.
That's the storage, not the gate.
That's correct.
Once the outbound would kind of bump out.
That's, um, it's just a like for your trash can in recycling, but I don't see a screen actually going to be that.
Facility.
Yes, I'm not sure if we're actually going to do that though.
Okay, okay, great.
Um, I have one more question about the privacy gate. So on the left-hand side there is our neighbor's fence, and I believe it's actually eighty-two inches high. And I proposed seventy-two inches according to, I believe, the guidelines. So do you want us to do seventy-two or do you want us to match the?
I think seventy-two, you know, I think in that case, the fact that you're coming in lower and it's kind of be able to see you to that is fine. And actually, actually change and, you know, direction will be better, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, can I give you all the information you need?
Yes, I believe so.
Yes.
So this was a conceptual review, so how would we proceed for approval?
So there's no vote from us, so it's purely the commentary for you to take that information and
Remind anything.
Refine use for your formal application, which is at your leisure whenever you feel ready to put that in. And then once, once we review that and, you know, if it's approved, and there's a certificate of appropriateness, you have then a year from then to.
If you'd like to be on the November ninth agenda, you have a week from today to submit updated materials. So that will include this, an updated application, kind of updating what's been taken out, you know, if anything has been added. Something clear for me, so I know how to type it up on the agenda. And then updated cutout product sheets, drawings and the like. And I will give you a hearing letter that can summarize all the commission's comments. It just takes me about three to five days to get it out to everybody, typically closer to three days. But if you want to be proactive about getting stuff together, you can have a week from today.
Would that require updated rendering of, let's say, the the metal wraparound fence in front, like, would you want to see an updated drawing of that?
You know, that sheet would be fine, as long as we've demarcated where it starts and ends.
It could be, yeah, it could be more loosely marked on a plan, the renderings are an added benefit, obviously not required. So that's up to you if you want to see that visually, but we will understand the intent if you could mark that change on.
Maybe just add a note to that, because I think the fence that you send a cut sheet of is the right style. I think it's just not shown correctly in the red room.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, for the iron. Yeah. I'm trying to make sure the height is consistent.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, and application number fifteen is twenty-nine and thirty-seven West Third Avenue. This is a conceptual review to install a wood fence along the deciding rear of the West property. And sell a wood deck and patio in the rear of the West property, cellar doors that are also replaced. Instraught two six-foot metal fences with privacy screening and used to create a private garden area. Instraught a two-foot high stone wall to mitigate grade change between the garden and the alley. Plant shrubs, trees and other plants. And just to note with this application, I am wrapping in some work that was done without approval at, I believe, thirty-seven West Third, is the West property. There, so we're just trying to get everything approved up to date as well as introduce new work of combining those two backyards into the single garden area. And the unapproved work includes the enlargement of the rear deck, installation of the paper patio, replacement of cellar doors, the existing fence and the two gravel parking areas. One at each property. HBO staff does not support the use of the screening fences unless they're with privacy fences. This is per city code thirty-one sixteen thirteen. Fences of wrought iron, stone or water or concrete. And if you want to propose the question, is a six-foot tall wrought iron fence appropriate? If privacy is needed, an appropriate fence type should be used. The commission will need to discuss that combining these two new yards into a single garden area is appropriate. And any variation may need to be approved by B C A to be they do require a review approval and recommendation from the Victorian Village Commission. And we would probably want to see those at the next review if they are applicable. Staff recommendation is that the commission should offer side feedback that can be utilized by the applicant to further refine the proposal for a review at a future meeting. Basis of staff recommendation is city code thirteen, thirty-one point sixteen point thirteen, the standards for site improvement. As well as the Victorian Village guidelines on fences and yards. And the city code thirty-one sixteen point eleven, these standards for alteration.
Quick clarification, the wrapping and the unapproved work, we are not voting on that.
Correct.
I think this is still purely, the recommendation for that to be lumped into
Yes.
Future application.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that we had everything and the commission will be looking at some stuff that was not approved, but still needed to be approved.
Brian, do you want to state your name for the record?
Sure, Brian Bernstein.
Swear to tell the truth, not the truth.
I do.
Okay. Great. Anything to add?
Um, uh, if we can maybe talk about the items that I would say that are outside of the application but are being roped into this, so that it'd be helpful for us for the designing that stay separate, recognizing that there's some administrative asset to that. Speaking solely from the perspective of the owner on this particular project, I think there's interest, not only wanting improving the property as proposed with this garden, but I guess some context that's outside of the application is that the owner's dealing with a lot of trespassing on the property and unnecessary activities happening in the evening that he's had to had security for his staff there that are there in the evening and then also having problems throughout the, throughout the night. So one of the motivations here is to help to limit those types of things happening because they're off an alley that comes through to the, to Third Street. So happy to explain other aspects of the design you'd like, I don't know if you'd like to do the other things first and then we could go to more details of that.
Well, I just want to say, you know, talking about the two separate yards, I really like this concept. And I don't see anything that if in fact the properties were were split, they couldn't be brought back to separate backyards.
Yeah, I mean, maybe the only thing there is the kind of the focal point there that's right straight on the property line.
But I mean, again, that's something that.
Maybe thinking about the shift of that so that that line can be marketed.
Sure.
In the future, but yeah, I agree that maximizing the use of this yard and the way it's.
And which people wouldn't look more detailed, like, I mean, I, I, I I can't find something that I can pick on this. You guys probably can, but I can't.
Are we just getting tired because we're running?
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Do we want to, so maybe talk about the fence a little bit, I know that an item that staff brought up in terms of the wrought iron typically is, you know, there's a level of transparency to it with that style of fence. So the, that style of fence at a higher height and, you know, with the screening, kind of talk about that versus, you know, exploration of other materials or.
Sure, so, so that I understand, do, is it fair to understand that the guidelines do allow for a six-foot board-on-board fence in a rear condition that's not seen through the street?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I think, I mean, that would be, I guess, a base case scenario here, and I think the owner is interested in a couple of strategies. One is that this is, allows for visual transparency to shrubbery and things like that that cut through, so that it makes it a little bit more softer and appropriate for adding to a little bit of those people who are back there. And so what you're seeing is the approach of using a more metal fence profile, but in areas where the gates are and trying to create some sense of privacy back there, we're proposing the use of a solid metal panel, and we used an example, I'll tell you a page. It's eleven, please, shows an example of how that's done typically with a wrought iron or metal gated scenario. And so we're proposing that condition at each of the gates, two in the rear here that are behind thirty-seven West Third and then one on the side of twenty-nine West Third. And that's simply to allow for that sense of privacy at those gates and then the other areas are aligned for landscape to to shed through.
I would say with the solid panel, having it completely solid seems very heavy. Um, if it was a, maybe if it went to a denser mesh, so it's not as transparent as the other ones, but you still have the sense of, oh, I'm going to open this gate and whack it right into someone. Might be somewhat of a compromise. Right now, the precedent seems very heavy.
I think it renders that way, I understand.
Well, even the photograph.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah. I guess in a, in a board-on-board fence scenario with that, I mean, you would have, it would be fairly opaque as well, right?
Or on board, you'd have a reveal between boards. And you can't, is that possible within this fence?
You have a reveal.
So there's a little teeny reveal that actually lets something come through.
Okay.
I think it's that, I think if you did something like that.
Sure.
I think it would work.
So either some sort of denser mesh or something that gives a little bit of the.
Yeah, just, just. The opacity. It's the transparency there.
And one thing just to point out, on the area, if you go, yes, that exhibit right there on the left-hand side. So there's an existing, in the existing photos, you'd see there's a A C unit that sits off the back of that carriage house. And so this proposal is putting that A C unit behind that panel as well. So I, I just want to be clear that the left one is not a gate from the exterior, it's hiding the the A C unit that currently today is just sitting out exposed.
Which is probably even a better idea that you have some kind of reveal, so.
Yeah, sure, right, yeah.
Next.
Yeah, otherwise, I, yeah, appreciate the the glaring there of the fence, edge road behind it.
And then my, as, and again, I said, I, I kind of like this a lot. My only question is, is the detail, and I don't mind it, but I just kind of wanted to understand the detail of the steps along the garage.
Yes, so best way to understand, in the existing photos in the beginning, you might see it, but the site grade, the way it exists today is the alley is, I want to say eighteen inches, maybe lower than the garage floor on twenty-nine West Third. And so one of the strategies for the garden area, which that area does sit about eighteen to maybe twenty-four inches once you get to the middle point. And so those steps are essentially just mitigating that grade because the owner still needs to pull their car around into the garage. And so you're kind of seeing like a feathering of the asphalt and then the stump steps into that, that grade.
Got it.
Uh, any other comments on the conceptual piece? Maybe circling back to the unapproved.
Yeah, I do have a comment on the conceptual.
Okay.
So just to make sure that the building is on the forehand, I believe this is in the short run parking district, which might create some problems, but since they're two separate properties, I'm a little bit concerned of the twenty-nine West Third is a business, so if you're moving the parking that was assigned over there to thirty-seven West Third, what is that going to do to the parking, just please check the building.
Sure.
Make sure, you know, there's no needed barricades, if that does, you know, happen, what, you know, are the mediation staffs or if that's parking stayed over there? Just so we're covering our bases before this does go to building zoning, so building zoning doesn't kick it back, it's something that this can happen.
Sure. Yeah, I think that. And then circling back to the unapproved items, so what are, what are those again?
Give me a second, so those are, this is thirty-seven West Third, the enlargement of our rear deck, installation of paper patio, replacement of cellar doors. The existing fence was put up without approval and those are the parking areas at thirty-seven and twenty-nine. Which we're going to remediate the gravel with, you know, the proposed project. And staff does not have a problem with the new cellar doors, it was just, it was done without approval and that all the exterior work does the approval.
So again, what was the sticking point here? Obviously, the cellar doors are okay.
But it doesn't have approval?
Yeah.
So it is. The door is that approval part? Um, the enlargement of the deck, installation of the paper patio, the existing fence was also put up without approval, but mainly it was done without approval, so it needs to be approved. Since we're doing this, kind of the conceptual application, it was easier just to put everything in as one.
So the, the deck you say was expanded?
Enlarged, yeah.
Enlarged, so there was an existing deck.
Yes.
And that remains.
Yep.
Yes.
And that detail kills me. It's a really good example of a bad deck.
Well, I was going to say, they are being hard on decks today, so this will, I feel like that just.
Exactly.
Probably should have some discussion about it.
Appreciate it, I agree. Do we know what it looked like before?
I do not recall off the top of my head, I don't believe I have a full picture of it.
Oh, I don't have any drawings and I was not part of that effort. I was trying to help facilitate finding some existing photos, Google Earth in three D has a deck that shows up there, I can't speak to if, how it's been enlarged or if it's been enlarged or what record indicates that, but there was a deck there at the time, so I'm not sure what components of it had been modified.
And Kimberly, there was no other C O A S for a deck or anything?
Not that I recall. I was unfortunately at the office last week, so.
I think this is one we need to be a stickler on, because I think everything else going on back there is great. And again, we have been real sticklers on decks and this is not just, you know, a couple inches up, this is.
This is a deck back.
This is exactly what you said, that is skirt, so.
So I think we need some more information and I think.
I guess what how would we validate what portions of that, I guess, would be existing and, and were not modified?
Well, really, I mean, if there was never a certificate of appropriateness, it's pretty unlikely that the deck existed prior to nineteen seventy.
Correct.
But none of the deck would be appropriate.
Yeah, that's a quack one.
Yes, I will look through the file as well, see if it's existing, coming our. Yes, I will look through the file as well, see from existing company hours and applications, what may have been approved and what photos we have. And who goes whenever this comes back around again.
So I, I see, see what information we gather on in, um, traditional decks. Typically loud.
Sure.
District, um, so see what information we can gather, you know, as you're working through the client on kind of the final improvements in that application. And I guess, if you're able to consider kind of the state of that deck, um, understanding that it's probably in some violation, um, if it comes down to it, can also be separate that out as a subitem.
In terms of voting.
Sure. So if it, you know, doesn't necessarily need to clog up the process.
Sure.
And everything else, but it will be something that we need to address.
Okay.
And do you really want a raised deck looking down at that garden paradise on?
We can have different.
Or vice, or vice versa.
I mean, it's fairly buried at the back of a house that's buried behind a beautiful patio, so.
Seems like an opportunity.
You're just saying, yeah, I agree. Anything else?
So I guess my question is, um, there's seen as the only comment on the proposed work is the, is that the end of the comment?
Unless you have any other.
I guess my, my question is, is that with the, the opacity issue, that I think we can change that from solid to some mesh. There are no other comments on the proposed design as stated?
Uh, the only one that I've mentioned abroad is just that, kind of that focal piece, just considering where it is.
Sure.
Maybe not having an element strive already properly lined and correct one side of the others, just for.
Okay.
Or easily removable.
But if it's, yeah, yeah, it can be.
Sure. Um, I guess, recognizing that the owner is in earnest trying to, um, construct this in light of winter coming and things like that. Is there any way that this could be improved this evening, uh, versus conceptual? Because it seems like it's an administrative formality to come back in thirty days.
If you pulled the deck out, you could. Uh, staff or mesh?
No, because I don't support the mess, so it'll come back here.
I think, what did you say?
I don't support the mash, so it'll come back to the commission. But I did put this on specifically as a conceptual, because it is something that we haven't seen. I'm concerned about parking, potential experiences. I do think this needs to come back, making sure we're closing the loops of contacting building and zoning, and making sure everything is moving forward at once.
So the very, very extreme view.
I got it key. If there's a very extreme, if there's, yeah.
And if there's not, that's okay, but we still need to make sure with building and zoning that, you know, it isn't needed, because they are not happy when things get through us first, and then the building zone will be after that, especially things need changed, because they're through the process, we're on the process.
And so I understand that you will not accept the opacity of the fence.
So I don't support it. The commission, on the other hand, has given their opinion. So if the commission approves it, I'm going to hold your feet to the fire and ask for code and, uh, guidelines.
And what, sorry?
Well, I guess we've, no, so don't, don't misinterpret what I said. I said, just like a fence, you would have a reveal, it's not a mesh, it's a, it's a figure panel that repakes.
Mesh was one option, the paneling was the other option, the consensus was some sense of transparency.
Yes.
So that's up to you to.
Come up with a solution.
What the solution is.
Sure, but if I come back to you in thirty days with a, uh, mesh option, is that supported here? Or, because I don't want to come back in sixty days, so.
It sounded like it would not be supported by staff.
Right.
But supported by staff is different than supported by the commission.
Right.
I don't have a.
I don't have.
Your note there.
I don't have a strong objection. I'd like to see it, I'm not, I'm not sold on the mesh yet. Just because I, I, all I imagine is like, kind of utilitarian fire escape meshes, so, uh, I'd like to see what it is. But I'm not flat on. So, okay, players of love.
Clear than others, so.
Are you sure me? Uh, so yeah, I think just kind of looking at that detail and, and making sure we're good on the parking side of the, the split box.
So the two things are coming back for mesh detail, the parking thing.
Although you're coming back.
I'm sorry, as it relates to the proposed design?
Yes, so there are things that need to update.
Right, and then I guess, to get some clarity, we, you mentioned the, the deck discussion, but the other, the cellar doors, is that seem to be?
That's fine.
Yeah, and the fence that you didn't get it right?
The board-on-board fence that's been back to probably nine.
So, yeah, and so the, the deck component, one option is to just include that with the application as completed.
True.
And in which case, if we have an issue with that, can separate that out as a, as a subitem that can be continued to give you some more time.
Sure. Uh, I guess.
Or if you decide with the owner that you're going to make some modifications to that, uh, issue too.
Right, so short of taking the deck down, I guess, um, I'd like to know is what is the feedback from the commission on the design of the deck? Or how would that need to be modified to meet your approval?
Decks aren't appropriate.
Yep.
They're not supported or allowed in the guidelines.
Right, but I guess I'm not hearing from the commission that this is being asked to be removed. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
It sounds like the commission's preference would be, it would be, you know, they prefer it to be removed, but it asks to be.
I, I'd like to see more information, we need to gather it on the history of that deck. It's something that there for twenty years, and there were slight modifications to it. I'm hard pressed to say it's got to go, or.
Yep.
But if it's something that is more recent, then it goes through the process.
Sure.
If I look at it differently.
Okay, so the deck and the fence, uh, I'm sorry?
The gates.
Yeah, no, I, no, I understand, I'm sorry, I'm, is it the board-on-board fence yet? I, I guess I'm looking for feedback if that's. I, I don't know, I have more to present to you other than these, the conditions that are out there, so.
So what's the question on the board on board?
So actually, the detail would be almost figure ground.
Oh, I see.
With the fence, do you know what I'm saying? So you have this, you have this section that's open, and then you have this section that's closed. Figure ground is the difference between what I see as a railing becomes open space.
You're asking about the fence that was a unapproved improvement, right?
Site plan.
And so you're looking for feedback if that is okay. Is that right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I, I was fine with it.
Yes.
It does.
So of those three items, you had four, which is the gravel park, but that's being covered.
Yes, that's being relegated.
So the three other items, the cellar doors, I'm hearing general acceptance of that. I know, I recognize there's a formal approval, but I'm hearing your feedback, the board on board, and then we'll come back with more information on the deck.
Board on board seems appropriate, as is.
Okay.
Um, I would challenge you just, you know, obviously, if you're extending, not necessarily extending onto it, but you're doing improvements, abutting to that, then we all feel good about that relationship.
As strong.
New fence to that, that board, board fence that exists to me.
You feel good about that, is what I'm hearing?
I'm okay with the fence as it exists.
Okay.
I don't, I, it's hard to tell that relationship between that fence and the proposed.
Can we look at, uh, the drawing that showed?
Does that, does that show up on?
Um, yeah, one more down there. Uh, one more further down, or actually, it's, uh, for the, a couple more down, we're thirty-seven. One more, yeah, right there. Uh, so on the left, you can see that existing fence and then the proposed fence coming to that.
So we're looking back towards the.
You're looking at the rear of, of thirty-seven along the alley and the deck, the deck in question.
The deck does not show up.
The back, the background of this. Yeah, right, so.
Yeah.
So from public view standpoint, you'd see this, that this proposed fence, and then there's a board-on-board fence that exists, and then the deck is back behind that, it's there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey. Thank you very much, I appreciate the clarity, that just helps us come back and answer your.
Appreciate you going through the process this way, and the player information. Any other comments? Okay?
Yeah, great, thank you guys, thank you.
Thank you, good evening.
Thanks.
Right, we're going to circle back to number nine real quick, because nobody else is in the room.
Do you have a motion to continue?
Yes, because there was some additional information and I was asked at a business meeting that I have not received. So we've got to come back to the next hearing.
Yep, I do have feedback, additional feedback to give, since the business meeting. So I, I looked at, I went down, I looked at the other patio there, and the railing mimics the White Castle, uh, seating area. It's like a cable rail type system.
Okay, okay.
Uh, so those two are, were trying to be consistent, this needs to be that, would be what I would say. Right now, they're showing a typical wrought iron fence type detail, I, I mean, I would think they should be consistent anyway.
I agree, same though.
So, I mean, they're. Do we need a formal motion?
We do need a formal motion to continue, because it's going to show, um, if they miss some of the meetings, we haven't had that continued, and I.
He's going to be at his car, we don't see, so.
Uh, I know, I'm trying to keep that.
Well, let's keep moving it.
Uh, motion on application, BD two-two-one-zero-zero-one-eight-nine-eight-three, North High Street, to continue the application. Second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any other business?
Um, I know I said last month, but I need all the people in the hearing, COVID knocked all of my medical stuff to November, so I need to ask again that everybody is here for the hearing, so we don't have to scramble.
Okay, I'm gonna look on this one really quickly, November ninth, I think. I am in Santa Monica.
I'm gonna be at a preservation conference in Detroit.
So two, so that's three people on.
I'll be here.
Okay.
I'll be here.
Sorry about that, but.
Hey, just take a nice picture of the beach for me.
Uh, as a family wedding.
Wait, you don't, you said Detroit?
Well, he said Santa Monica, and I was like, that sounds very beachy.
Yeah.
Did you hear what I said? It's a family wedding.
I know.
Yeah.
Sorry, you're not listening.
I get to go talk about old buildings for four days, so.
Um, if Sean is here, like, forum is for, and, um, Pete Truler, who is the new member, let me know he had another conference that he's presenting, so. He's scheduled these things in advance and apologizes.
So we're teetering.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I will touch base with Sean as well, because I mean, anything can happen between now and then, family emergencies, COVID, and other things.
Uh, motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye. Aye.